Worcester S.S. To a Constable in the Town of Berlin. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Berlin, qualified to vote in-town elections and town affairs, to meet at the Berlin Memorial School, 34 South Street, Berlin, Mass., on Monday, the sixth day of May, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. Then and there to act on the following articles or in relation thereto, namely... And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof, as per vote of the town, in said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Given under our hands this first day of April, 2024, Berlin Select Board, Christine Keefe, Chair; Margaret Stone, Vice Chair; R. Scott Hawkins, Clerk. Signed by the Constable Kevin Pond. They were attested and posted on April 3, 2024, at the post office, the town offices, and the town hall. Thank you.
I'll ask you to take a look for a moment in the front part of your town meeting booklet. The first page is financial terms. As people talk about money in various accounts, you may find that helpful. Then we have the town bylaws governing the conduct of town meeting, which, again, lays out what the rules are to a great extent. And then you have a page called Berlin Town Meeting. I call your attention first to the public safety line, which is that in case of a fire alarm or whatever, please leave the building through the side exits. There's two big side exits on each side, and we can empty the room in a minute, minute and a half if we use them, if we have a need of it, an emergency. The rest of that page details a bit more about how we do business, how we make motions, what the rules are, and especially note the items in regard to courtesy. I gave... I have distributed a proposed rule for Berlin's town meeting. Many of you have it in your hand. It's the same as we have used for about two years at each meeting that we've held, and this deals with electronic voting. These little doodads here, which enable us to get accurate vote counts relatively quickly and with much less labor and difficulty in cases where we have something that's controversial. So the proposed rule is for this meeting, voting by electronic means will replace counted standing votes or votes by show of hands. Electronic votes will also be used in place of secret ballot votes. The moderator shall have the discretion to use electronic voting when he deems it necessary to have a complete, accurate vote count. Is there a motion to adopt that rule? Motion has been made, is seconded. Anything to be said on that motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote, and we'll do it this way. If you're in favor, push the green button, yes. If you're opposed, push the red button, no. And if you don't want to vote, just don't. We only count the votes of the people that actually vote. So I'll ask you to vote.
And Nick, tell them to make sure that it says okay.
That they what?
Tell them to make sure it says okay.
Okay. Up at the top of the little screen on the remote, when you vote, there'll be an okay that shows up, and that indicates that your vote has been counted. Okay? So I'll ask you to vote now. All those, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. And if the okay appears, that means your vote was recorded. There's a lot of people standing up. I guess we've got it, haven't we? I'm going to close the voting on that, and we'll get our results. We have 228 yes and 10 no, so the motion passes in the affirmative. And we've still got 14 of our 18 chairs empty up here. People that are standing up, if you voted, please come down and sit here. Yeah. The non-voters are supposed to stay in the back of the room, and hopefully, we've got a few more seats there for that. We also have lots of chairs in the front down here on this corner, too. The town clerk has asked me to announce that early voting in next week's town election starts tomorrow in the town clerk's regular office hours, which are 11 to 2?
Tuesday and Thursday, and 7 to 9.
11 to 2 on Tuesday and Thursday, and 7 to 9 on Wednesday. So early voting in the town election can be done then. Article one. Prior year's expenses. We have a couple of bills that were not taken care of during the last fiscal year, and we need to deal with those. This requires a four-fifths vote, so I hope we'll have a clear thing. Chris Keefe?
I move to transfer $3,403 from free cash for the payment of the following unpaid prior year's expenses. First one is Lewison, Costello, Condon, and Fath, LLP, for tax title services for $187. The second one is Officer Dean Belleville,
Now, on your... On your town warrant that you've been given, there are a lot of proposed motions there. Chances are, most of the motions we make tonight will be those motions. But here and there, there may be a different one. So it's a good idea to listen as it's read, and if it's different, I will also call attention to it. Christine, do you want to talk to that?
As the warrant says, the article is required for the payment of expenses incurred prior to July 1, 2023 that were not submitted by the close of the fiscal year, which would have been June 30.
The Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Do you have anything to add? Okay, in that case, I will ask you to vote. This one, we need a four-fifths vote, so we need to have it carefully recorded, and we will do it by electronic vote. I'll call a halt to the voting now, and we'll get our results. It's 247 to 9 in the percentage. 96% in favor, so the motion passes. Article two, Sunset Clause Removal. This is in regard to a vote that was taken at the 2020 Annual Town Meeting. Motion under Article two. Scott Hawkins of the Finance Committee? Excuse me, of the Board of Selectmen. He used to do that. Now he's in the board of selectmen.
Okay. I move to remove the Sunset Clause by which monies must be expended on Article 19 of the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, the planning board master plan.
Motion is made and seconded. Do you want to speak to it?
When we made this in 2020, a few things have happened since that year that has made spending this money difficult by this time. The planning board is still actively working on this, and because things have happened since 2020, we'd like to give them some more time to finish working on the master plan.
You've got to be kidding me. Anyone else want to speak to the motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. Please vote with your... I'll close the voting on this motion. Motion passes, 215 yes, 19 no. Article three, Transfer Free Cash to Conservation Open Space Fund.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. I make a motion to transfer $27,712 from free cash to the Conservation Open Space Fund.
Motion is made and seconded in the same form as it was on your warrant.
So what this is, is that the town receives $50,000 from the Solomon Pond Mall agreement. However, this year, there was $22,888 that was put towards the purchase of the conservation land last year for Horseshoe Pond, thus the math of the $27,712 that we'll be transferring from the original 50.
Finance Committee has recommended. Anything further? Does anyone else want to speak to this?
Hi, Noel Rosenberg Village Lane. $22,888 and plus $27,712 does not add up to $50,000.
If you give us a minute, we're going to confirm with our accountant on the $400 difference, so thank you for your patience. $600, I wrote $600, 400 came out. Welcome to peg math. Okay, so if you look at the motion, the proposed motion amount is correct, $27,712. There was a typo down below in the description, so you can feel free to vote the proposed motion as is. That amount of money, the $600, would be coming back to the town.
Anything else? Let's proceed to a vote. Let's do this by voice and see if we can go faster. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. Article four, Community Preservation Act Project Revision in Regard to the Pavilion to Be Built on South Commons that we voted last year.
Mr. Moderator, I move to change the installation site for the pavilion to be built on South Commons from the northwest region near the pond and recreation courts to the central region across from the Berlin Memorial School driveway, as depicted below.
That's in the same form as it was in the warrant? Do you want to speak to it?
I would, please. So, folks, you may... Yeah, yeah, fine. So last year, the Recreation Committee proposed construction of a 25-by-44-foot steel pavilion on the side of South Commons near the pond. You graciously approved that project, and so we're locked and loaded to build that pavilion. Subsequent to the approval, discussions during the execution phase raised some concerns that were brought forth to us from the Berlin PD, that they had some concerns about the location and whether or not that site behind the school and near the pond was really the right place to solicit gathering, which is the intent of the pavilion. And so they kindly asked us to reconsider if there could be another space for that structure that would serve the community in a similar way, but not... But mitigate those risks that were brought up. So... Can you go back to the first slide, please? Would you mind? So this is the graphic we shared last year, and the light blue dot was the proposed location. This is the pavilion structure that was proposed and approved. And as you can see, it's roughly equidistant from the courts and the pond, and that was the considered spot last year. And then, now you can move to the next slide, please. And so our suggestion and recommendation from the Recreation Committee is that we move it to the other side of South Commons, opposite the school, somewhere within this proposed region here, basically from the small playground to the Little League courts, or the Little League field. We think that there's a great opportunity for us to tie the pavilion in that area with some other projects that are pending... Sorry, I hope you're able to hear me okay. With some other projects that are pending in that area, we have funds approved to renovate and replace that small playground over there, so we could potentially tie it in with the playground. There's also some field rehab you're going to be hearing about tonight, and so we think there's an opportunity for us to tie it in with those two projects and make a nice kind of cohesive space for the town. So we're not asking for money, just asking for your approval to move it to that revised location.
Anyone else want to speak to this motion?
Bill Anderson, Peach Hill Road. I'm just kind of curious what you're going to do with the parking spaces that you're displacing with this taking over this space here.
The pavilion would not displace any parking spaces on its own? Are you saying that people... Sorry if it's not clear. So the intention of that space is over the green space? So we wouldn't consume any of the paved parking spaces?
If you want to speak, come up to the mic. Don't talk across the room.
This issue is probably better fielded by somebody who has kids that are still playing baseball and soccer and stuff like that, and more familiar with that area. But from my recollection, people pull off of...
Talk into the microphone, please.
From my recollection, people pull head into the grassy area. It's very dense parking, and I think it's going to be missed if we take that away.
Thank you. I'm definitely a parent that has kids that play sports there, so I'm familiar, I think I'm familiar with the parking arrangement you're describing, and the pavilion would not overlap with any of that parking area.
Am I correct that the Select Board will also have to sign off on the final location? Since the property is actually under the supervision of the Select Board?
Yes.
Leave it to them. Anything else? If not, I'm going to ask you to vote. Again, I'll do a voice vote. All those in favor of allowing the change in the location of the proposed pavilion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article five, Fourth Modification of the River Bridge Development Agreement. You don't want to talk a lot, because this has got a lot of stuff in it, and we need to be able to hear everything that people say. Chris Keefe?
I move to approve the fourth modification of the River Bridge Development Agreement.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the fourth modification of the River Bridge Development Agreement. There's a long description of it printed down below here on the page, and onto the next page. And, Chris, do you want to speak to it?
I'll just say a few things, and then I would ask that you recognize our town administrator, Kristin Rubin. So it's been approximately, I would say, three-plus years of working on this development agreement, which we hope will be the last one. We've included subgroup department heads to get feedback over the years. And so I am going to let Kristin speak to the description and the concessions, total estimated concessions.
Kristin, our town administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So as Chris mentioned, this dates back to 2009, the original development agreement for the River Bridge Development. And... It's not stopping the further way I move. We have been working on it for... Well predates me for the past three years to try to tie up some of the loose ends in the agreement. And obviously, over the past 15 years, a lot has changed, including there was a hotel that was built that was originally unanticipated. So if you go through this, and I don't want to read the whole thing to you, but basically, what this allows the town to have is the option to purchase both Lot 6A and 6B at River Run for $1, including full ownership of the two wells on those properties. It also would forgive back rents that were not paid due to COVID. And just to make this clear, this is not rents that Boundless Adventures owed to the town. They were rents that Boundless Adventures owed to the developer, and the developer paid to the town in accordance with the previous agreement. So we worked with them long and hard to try to determine how we could make up for those lost rents. And the conveyance of the property, the wells, really come in to offset that difference. There's also an agreement to pay 5% interest on any late payments, provide funding towards the cost of the bridge renovation and remaining road work. The town will seek matching grant funding to finalize that. We also did not end up getting a continuing care retirement community there, because there was a hotel that was built. And the hotel revenue generates about $220,000 a year, so we would be agreeing to nullify the requirements that were centered around that continuing care retirement community. So in total sum, there is a summary of estimated concessions and estimated gains. It's forgiving an estimated $250,000 in back rent that's owed. Unfortunately, there are existing agreements that tie the road to that parcel 6A and parcel 6B, so we would have to do maintenance and take on that road up at River Run. We do forgive the $51,200 penalty payment for not constructing a continuing care retirement community, but that is offset with the annual $220,000 in hotel tax that we get. And we also get parcel 6A, which is currently appraised at $473,800 in FY24. We previously just had rights to purchase parcel 6B for $1. Also, the sole ownership of the wells, which were previously shared, as I mentioned, and, in a good faith effort, to offset those rents that were unpaid. Because we are becoming the property owner of both of those parcels, all of the Boundless Adventures rents would go to the town, and that's estimated to be $100,000 per year, beginning January 1 of '25, for their remaining 10-year term, but they also have a 15-year option to renew. So we worked really hard on this multiple years to make sure that the town was still getting a fair deal through this development agreement, and we do feel that we have achieved that.
The Finance Committee has a 4-nothing recommendation. Is there anything further? Anyone else want to speak?
Pete Mosher, Brigham Road. Two questions I can ask. One is the $250,000 that Boundless Adventures owes to the River Bridge Development. I heard that that was not paid due to COVID, but I'm curious regarding the COVID mitigation that was provided by the federal government. I'm curious if Boundless Adventures is up to date on their rent for 2023, because if we're expecting $100,000 a year from them, I'd like to know that they're... we're expecting $100,000 a year from them, I'd like to know that they're a valid going concern and that they would pay their debts. The second question is regarding the CCRC. I was here when we voted to have the whole RESE development, and part of that understanding was that we would have a CCRC, because a lot of folks want to stay in town when they need additional care, either themselves or their parents or anything like that. So I believe that when we changed the overlay district to allow the hotel to be built, that we already sort of gave the consideration to the River Bridge Development folks for that hotel. So counting the revenue from the hotel as kind of offsetting that doesn't seem quite genuine, so if I could have that squared too, I'd like it. Thanks.
Kristin Rubin?
Thank you. So just to be clear, Boundless Adventures is completely up to date on all of their rents that they owe the River Bridge Development. It's that the River Bridge Development was supposed to split those rents 50/50 with the town. So I apologize for not making that clear. So it's actually through the development agreement that the developers hadn't paid that throughout the COVID process. So I hope that clears that up. It's not boundless, so they are paying their rents, they are incurring revenue now, and they are up to date. So in terms of the critical care facility, this is really a penalty payment for not constructing it and not having to provide those ambulance services that were associated with the CCRC. The $220,000 in hotel tax revenue, my understanding was it wasn't anticipated from the beginning of the project to add that to the town. And I can certainly understand folks wanting to stay in town and wanting to have that additional, you know, resource there. My understanding is that, you know, that was a decision that had been made at the time, so we're trying to kind of work within the parameters of where we are today.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Shane Ross from 15 Linden Street. So is this the pizza place? Building, like the liquor store down here?
That's River Bridge.
Okay, interesting, because I was offered that building like two years ago, and for our hair salon. So you're telling me the developer didn't pay taxes? I wish I didn't have to pay taxes.
Please speak into the microphone, so we--
I'm trying to figure it out. So they owe us 250 grand? They didn't do PPP or ERC?
May I?
Yeah.
They are up to date on their taxes. So we had a development agreement when the development was originally set, so it's actually just a payment to the town through the development agreement. That was supposed to come on board. When Boundless came on board, there were issues with COVID and things getting up and running, so those revenues were not transferred over.
Okay. Yeah, well, even the hair salon, I, two years capacity restrictions, but the question is, are you going to make sure that this is managed properly and that we're actually going to get revenue from it, and it's not going to tank on us?
Okay.
Thank you. So the revenues will come directly to the town now, because we will be the owners of that property. There is an existing lease in place, and those revenues have been steadily growing and coming in at a rate of about $100,000 a year in the post-COVID years.
Anyone else? Paul McKelk?
Paul McKelk, Carter Street. One thing--
Close it to the mic, Paul.
One thing that has not come out is that the wells we're talking about are not like your backyard wells. These wells, and correct me if I'm wrong, are considered public water supplies, which we do, which are sanctioned by the DEP, which certainly gives them considerable value.
Tom Sanford, 425 Sawyer Hill Road. If the town's going to become the landlord to Boundless Adventures, do we understand the liability the town may incur from an insurance standpoint from that? And the $100,000 we're going to be getting in, is the gross, not the net? Okay. Okay. So do we know what the expectation of the insurance premium is going to be for that, roughly?
Kristin?
Thank you. So they would need to list us as additionally insured on their insurance. That would be their requirement to do so, so we would be covered there, so that's not an additional expense to the town.
Hi, Bob Holmes, Ball Hill Road. Three, I think, pretty simple questions. Why doesn't River Bridge choose to sell this property themselves and repay their debt? Is one. The second is, if the town procures this land, are they required to sell it? And if not, what is the town's plan to use that land?
Kristin?
There were a lot of things that needed to be tied up from the last modification. And I think that within this fourth modification, we have tied those things up. There were obligations, that they had obligations. We had, you know, it was a give and take, and I think that that's, you know, what we've done hopefully in this, hopefully last modification.
Is there someone else?
Oh, as far as the land use for 6A and 6B, we haven't totally determined that. We have a couple of options, and I think the next article will sort of address that.
You'll know that this article is a modification of the development agreement that the town made with the developer at the time that we did the River Bridge Development and has amended up to this time. And then Article six actually deals with the parcel of land that we're talking about. Right now, it's the fourth modification of the development agreement. Anything further? Finance Committee has recommended, and that's-- Anything more? Finance Committee still recommends. I'll ask you to vote by electronic means. Article five, the motion is to approve the fourth modification of the River Bridge Development Agreement. Please vote now. I'll call it into the voting, and we'll get the results. That's 202 yes, 71 no. A total of 273 votes cast. The motion passes. Article six, acceptance and disposition of parcels 728-0 and 728-7. And these refer to these lots that have already been talked about a little bit under the previous motion. Kristine?
I move to authorize the Select Board to exercise its option to purchase lots 6A and 6B at River Run, and to convey said parcels by sale, long-term lease, and/or any other means as written in the warrant.
Motion is made and seconded in the same words that are printed in your booklet. Kristin is going to speak to it? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this is the next step in the process. Once we pass the development agreement, is to accept the ability to purchase those parcels for $1, and to do a lease sale, or what's known as disposition of the property. As Chris alluded to, there isn't a specific plan in place, because there needs to be what's called an RFP, or Request for Proposal Process, where we put it out essentially to bid and have folks come to us and tell us what they want to do at the property and how much they're willing to pay for it. There's also a potential secondary option, which we've been discussing with Planning Board, as the possibility of looking at using a small piece of that land for some potential future small-scale cottage housing, because we know that there's an issue with workforce housing in the community and trying to keep folks able to stay and grow old, as well as grow up and stay in Berlin. So there's a couple of different options that we may be able to look at. So those would all require further discussions at further public meetings.
Is there comment by the Finance Committee on this? No comment by the Finance Committee. Anyone else want to speak on the motion? Hearing no one, I'm going to-- Anyone else want-- Does someone else want to speak? Okay. Because this is a vote to acquire property, and in fact, included in it is a possible vote to sell property, it requires a two-thirds majority vote. And therefore, we will vote on it by electronic means. I'll ask you to vote on the motion now. It is to exercise the option to purchase lots 6A and 6B at River Run, and to convey said parcels by sale, long-term lease, or any other means as written in the warrant. Please vote now. I'll close the voting now and get the results. On the percentage, please. There's an 87% vote in favor, 235 yes, 34 no. The motion passes. Article seven, acceptance of Chapter 32B, Section 9A. This is the acceptance of health insurance programs for retirees of town government.
I move to accept MGL Chapter 32B, Section 9A, relative to the funding 50% of the cost of other post-employment benefits for town retirees.
Motion is made and seconded, and it's in the same form that we had before, that is printed in the booklet. Are you going to speak to it?
I'll start and then hand it over to, if you would recognize him after a minute. This is the first of a couple motions I get to make that are really legal lease, but at the end of the day, what this is doing is allowing the town of Berlin to provide post, well, retirement health benefits to our employees, who are one of only a handful of towns and that don't do it. I can tell you that I was fairly opposed when we started this process, and I think in a great conversations and negotiating with the Insurance Advisory Committee have come to an agreement, which I think both helps us retain long-term employees that have a lot of institutional knowledge for the town, and provides them some benefits at a weight that does not unduly hurt the taxpayers. The employees of the town and the Insurance Advisory Committee have come to several agreements, some even before this motion, to show their intent, their belief in trying to support not overburdening the taxpayers, and I would greatly encourage you to approve this motion. And I would like to recognize Mr. Hanks as the head of the Insurance Advisory Committee.
The-- I want to-- Finance Committee has a four-nothing recommendation. Anything further? Okay. Richard Hanks, who has worked as the building commissioner, but he's been working on the committee that deals with insurance, so.
Good evening, thank you. Yes, so my name is Richard Hanks, and I am--
Get closer to the mic if you can, Richard.
Okay, good evening. My name is Richard Hanks, and I am the chair of the Insurance and Advisory Committee, the IAC for short. So the IAC reviews and makes recommendations to the Select Board regarding healthcare premiums and plans. The municipal job market has become increasingly competitive. Fewer and fewer workers are entering into the municipal workforce. We have to compete for employees with our surrounding communities, all of which do provide OPEB. The town has become a training ground for other communities. The town pays to train police officers, firefighters, highway workers. We also provide uniforms, protective gear, and clothing, only to have them move on to another community for better benefits. This holds true for other departments as well. We have seen prospective new hires decline employment opportunities with town because the town currently does not offer OPEB. As you should be able to appreciate, there is a cost to employee training and retention. I have mentioned a few examples. We believe that it is crucial to recruit and retain the best talent possible to service the needs of the community. Last year, in an effort to reduce the cost of healthcare premiums and to help fund OPEB, the employees chose a planned modification. These changes added larger employee contributions and co-pays. This created savings to the healthcare premiums of approximately $34,000. For FY25, the Select Board has implemented a change in eligibility requirements to be on the town's health insurance plan. It is anticipated that this policy change by the Select Board will result in the savings of approximately $84,000 annually.
Yes. Mary, Claudia of the Finance Committee.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Finance Committee voted in favor of this. It just makes sense. We have a very competitive employment market out there. The ability of the town of Berlin to attract good people and keep good people is really at the core of this, and it's a very costly thing to have employee turnover, to retrain, to lose experienced people, and so on. So I think it's very-- This is a simple question, certainly from my perspective, in the FINCOM vote here, that we want this. The other part, it's being done in a very financially prudent way. So, you know, there's the annual premium, but we're working into it slowly over time, and we're permitted to do that under the Massachusetts law. So I am very much in favor of this provision. And the FINCOM vote is also-- I'm speaking for me, but as well as the FINCOM. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to the motion? Bill Anderson?
I'm just curious, are there stipulations regarding your eligibility to participate in this program, like years of service and stuff like that?
Through the moderator, yes, there are requirements. We have a policy plan that's been well-prepared. So in order to be eligible, you have to be eligible to retire through the Worcester County Regional Retirement System, so that's all laid out as to how many years of service you need to be. So there's different levels based on what the employee is, so police and fire can get a little early than what the general employees could get out. But as of the retirement change policy that went in 2025-- But as of the retirement change policy that went in 2012, it added requirements that people have to stay longer and have more years of service in order to retire. So anybody that's newly hired after 2012 has to stay longer than the people that were hired prior to that, that go into the retirement system. Did I not answer?
How many years do they have to stay?
I see hands going up. Typically, a police firefighter needs to be vested in the service by, I think, 20 years, and a general employee needs to be 22 or 25 years. But that's not... Typically, to the town of Berlin, that's years of service with the retirement system.
Excuse me. Live on Village Lane. I served in town government for quite a few years, and I saw a lot of really painful losses of good people who had worked in the town for years, but knew that we, unlike so many other towns around us, could not, or would not, provide them with healthcare in their retirement. And we've lost outstanding police chiefs and others. So I encourage people to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Okay. Then we'll proceed to a vote on this. The motion is as written in your booklet, and we'll ask you to vote by electronic means. Please start voting now. We'll get our results. That's 261 yes, 18 no. It's a majority vote, so the motion passes. The next is establishment a stabilization fund by Assabett Valley Regional Vocational Technical School District. Lynn Ryan, do you have motion?
I move to establish a stabilization fund for the Assabett Valley Regional Vocational Technical School District pursuant to Section 16G 1/2 of Chapter 71 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Said stabilization fund to be invested and to retain its own interest earnings as provided by law, and to set up an operational line item to transfer available monies into said
Motion is made and seconded. You want to speak to it?
Oh, just briefly. It's not unlike the stabilization fund that the town has. Most regional school districts are, in fact, treated as a municipality. There are things that need to be done at the school, and rather than come and bond something, we'd like to be able to save the money and do it when it needs doing. One of the things I'd like to see them do is fix the parking lot.
Finance Committee has a printed recommendation in favor. Is there anything further from you? Anyone else want to speak on this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote by electronic means, please. You can start voting now. 253 yes, 16 no. And it's a simple majority vote, so the motion passes. Article 9, Cap Improvement Plan. The committee, the article here is a large one that includes a lot of money and several projects, which you see listed in the table there. We have this come up in recent years as a unit, a program, and so we'll be adopting all of these, and questions and discussion can involve any individual items, as well as the total package. Motion.
That's Stephen Clark, 20 Coben Road. I move to transfer $67,900 from free cash and $325,963 from the Public Safety Stabilization Account to fund the fiscal year 2025 capital improvement plan budget for the projects items as printed in Article 9 of the warrant, and further move that $177,787 be transferred from free cash to the capitalization fund, stabilization fund, as recommended by the
Motion is made and seconded, in the same form as it is printed in your warrant, and it includes all of these items. We have a full Capital Planning Committee recommendation and a Finance Committee recommendation that are printed in favor. Anything else to be said by Finance on it?
No.
Okay. Stephen, you want to speak to it?
I do.
Or not?
Kristen's going to do it for me.
Okay. Kristen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The items that you have here, there's a couple pieces to it, so I just wanted to point out that only $67,900 is actually coming from free cash. That's for the first two items. The last item is a stabilization fund, so I apologize, that is free cash as well, but it is in accordance with the FinCom's use-of-free cash plan that 10% every year be put into general stabilization, which is like your rainy day fund for emergencies. And then, much as we just spoke about with regard to Assabett, a capital stabilization fund for capital emergencies with buildings, et cetera, that may arise. Items three through eight are coming out of a special fund that is public safety stabilization. These are monies that come from development agreements, including Highland Commons and River Bridge. They are specifically allocated towards public safety and cannot be used for any
Anyone else want to speak to this? Yes, Bill?
Quick, easy question. So what is going to be done under number nine? What are the renovations you're anticipating?
I'm going to attempt to give a quick overview. There's a long story, but it's a really neat opportunity that we have. The upstairs of the public safety building at 23 Linden Street was never finished. It's just framed out. And we're very happy to have Assabett with us this evening. They approached us about six weeks ago, so we were up against quite a time crunch to try to determine this. The students of Assabett and their faculty have offered us their services. It's going to be about a 12-to-18-month project. They're going to work across disciplines, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, carpentry. It's an indoor project, so the students can work year-round, and it's estimated to cost one-third of what it would have cost to have a professional company come in and do it. And it's an incredible opportunity for the students. So we're trying to allocate funding. What we have to pay for are materials, and we pay 15% to Assabett to cover their cost of tools and transportation for the students.
This is the area that is attic over the police station and the fire offices in the building, for those who might not be familiar.
You know, in other... This is basically twofold. The upstairs is to basically have housing for the firemen, firewomen when they're there, exercise room. Also downstairs, to do the kitchen over, to commercial grade, so if there's a disaster, that they can serve people out of that kitchen with the quality of merchandise there. Second, it also helps the police department, because they've run out of storage for all their evidence, and it's made out of two-by-fours and plywood, and it does not meet the state requirements. So it's twofold. This is going to be for upstairs and the police department.
Hi, Buzz Harris, Village Lane. I have a question about the $400,000 HVAC and air conditioning item for Berlin Memorial School. I just spent part of this afternoon speaking to a parent of... Oh, it's not part of this motion? I apologize. I thought that was part of it as well. I'll come back to that. Thank you.
On the next page, as part of a report of the Capital Planning Committee, are items for the school department. Those are not part of this vote. They will be coming up later when we do the capital section of the school budget later in the meeting. But as of right now, we're not voting on the things to do with the schools.
If I could just clarify why we did it this way, the budget is all numbers, and there's really no section in the budget to detail what the capital items are for the school. So if you look at the budget in the back, you'll see there's a line item in there for Berlin Memorial Capital and Tohonto Capital. We've been asked before how that breaks down. So the Capitol Committee does take a vote, so it's in here, but it will actually be voted on later as part of the budget. So I apologize, I know that's a little bit confusing, but we wanted to give people a description of what was involved.
Anyone else want to speak on the motion that covers items 1 through 10 on page
Mary Reddington, Pleasant Street. From the coffee chat, when we talked about the $175,000, that was just the beginning of the costs. There was going to be a lot more costs, and I wish somebody would speak to that.
Yes. Just basically, the $175,000, we need it as a commitment for Assabett. If we did not give them a commitment and proceed with some of the plans for this, we could not have gotten them to do the work for us. So we had to have a commitment. The whole project is approximately $650,000. Okay. I'm going to have the chief, fire chief. He can explain this to you more than I can. And this is all public mitigation money. It's not tax money.
So let me make sure I get close enough to the mic here, so you can all hear me. Yeah, the materials that we came up for this, this is the initial project to get Assabett to be able to commit to being here for the 12 to 16 months it's going to take to do this. We don't have a complete materials list because the project hasn't gone out for the complete engineering plans for them to be able to develop that list from the structural engineers and the electrical engineers. So this initial money goes towards some of the construction costs. It's going to be for the flooring that go down, the plywood, the... Some of the appliances that are going into the facility. And there were things that I kind of came up with, kind of working with Assabett, asking them about it, because we don't have the actual engineered plans, we don't have a full list of materials that they're going to need. In talking with Assabett, I believe the total cost of this is going to be around $600,000 for the construction, based on the initial price that we got on, and I think was $1.8 million. So talking with Assabett, they were comfortable. They said usually it's about a third of that cost that they can come in and do that for. And that's where this kind of came in, was to at least start the project, and at the next town meeting, we'll have the full set of plans and stuff that we can look at at that point in time. And if we don't fund it at that point in time, they stop the work, and we're not committed to anything on that part.
Anyone else want to speak to this?
One talks at a time. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Two, Walter Bickman, Two Grove, South City. Sorry I'm a little late, but I'm just coming in on this Article 9, and I want to express my opposition to, number one, the demo with the brown barn. People think, oh, God, this old... Incidentally, my folks moved to Berlin in 1946. I was four years old and grew up here. 1953, you were, 23 working dairy farms in Berlin, so that's my history, and I love Berlin, I love the history, I love the trout fishing in Northbrook, and that's where I'm coming from. And I'm looking at this, and, you know, I'm glad I'm 82 years old, frankly. But anyway, I'm looking at the demo of the brown barn. People look at that and they say, oh, this is a no-brainer. I'm sorry, I disagree. It's the last, actually, that was a dairy... That was a farm when I was a kid, there were cattle around there, and that was a barn to house cattle. And in that barn, at this point, as we sit here, there's a 1930, maybe a 20s-era Buffalo Springfield roller that the town had. It was the first major equipment that the town highway barn bought, that the town highway department bought to roll roads and to make highways in Berlin, from dirt roads to paved roads. It's sitting in that barn right now. Very few of you know that. The people that proposed this article don't know it. I know it. Me and a few other people, Denny Bartlett, former highway commissioner, grew up in Berlin, and I, and a few others, are thinking of restoring that old roller and setting it up up in the highway barn on Route 62, and setting it and having it beautiful. It's an antique, and all over the country, people are paying great money for that roller. None of you know about this. I know about it. And it's a beautiful old machine, but yet, the people that propose this don't know about it. Just tear the barn down, get rid of that. Well, Denny and I and a few others are thinking of restoring that and setting it up, and we need two or three, maybe four years to restore it. We need cover, to work in, get it running, paint it up, restore it. It's incredible. You wouldn't even believe it. One wheel on the background of it probably weighs, I don't know, four or five tons. It's a magnificent machine. But anyway, there's a lot of history to that barn, and just to tear it down, to me, I mean, I just was shocked to see that. I would appreciate you voting against this article for that alone. Leave that for a couple of years, let us get our act together, let us restore it, let us work in there, and also to restore that. And also, the issue of, they want to... They want to tear that down and then pave it. I'm against paving, frankly. There are construction outfits that have heavy machinery and equipment going in, dirt and paved and compacted gravel driveway. I don't want to see any more pavement in Berlin. I'm sorry. I'm sick of it. We need to think about a natural environment, and I think that we should consider... I would vote again... I would vote against this and ask the selectmen to reconsider this and come back, and we'll probably have a town meeting in the fall and reconsider this. I'd like to see that building there another two or three years, anyway. Let us restore that old thing, set it up at the town barn up on Route 62. And I just don't, I don't want to see that area paved and changed from the time when I remember it, when cattle grazing in those fields. And I just, I just see this as a shot at what Berlin was in the past. And I don't think we need any of this stuff in here. But anyway, if I, probably should offer an amendment to... amend, to eliminate, number one, but I'm sorry I can't. I just think we'd vote against it and ask the selectmen to reconsider this, come back with a little more consideration, talk to a little more people, get a little more input, and come back here with an article that doesn't totally pull away with Berlin, what Berlin was. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Anyone else want to speak?
Peter Hoffman, Randall Road. With respect to Number 9, I'm not sure it's a good or bad idea, because I don't have enough information, but I think it's underfunded. It seems we need $600,000, and we're appropriating $175,000. Why isn't this done all in one fell swoop?
That's a very good question, and I apologize for not addressing it. So we have also allocated $148,000 in ARPA funding to this, and we plan to allocate additional public safety mitigation funding. We did just receive a check from Highland Commons for our annual mitigation funding for public safety in the amount of $700,000. That unfortunately doesn't come in until April, so it was too late to allocate this in the warrant, but we would be able to allocate it at the fall town meeting, and we do have that cash in hand now.
How many square feet are we talking about?
I actually don't have that off the top of my head. I do have it in my notes.
Is it several hundred, several thousand?
Chief, the same square footage as the base, right?
It's a little bit less than the base, because of the truss base that we can't use on the sides.
I just wonder what it would come out to be, per square foot, the cost? I know municipal and government has to...
Twenty-six thousand.
So at $100,000, $100 a square foot, that's $260,000. I don't know what the per-square-foot cost for this sort of thing is, but I think that should be explored. I'm not opposed to it, but I think it's something for all of us to think about. Thank you very much.
The original proposal came, was in a staggering $1.8 million to do this, from some engineering that the chief had done. And Chief Schottner and the fire chief, both were like, this is unreal. We can't do that. Then ASABET came to us, and we can do it for one-third of the engineering cost, strictly labor-free. We have to buy materials. So the thought is, and we have Lowe's, we have FW Web, we have all these people that we can say, hey, listen, ASABET is doing this. Can you help us out? And from past experiences, they will.
Buzz?
Buzz Harris, Village Lane. Move to call the question.
Is there a second? We have several. Okay, a motion to call a question is to stop debate on the issue. And we will proceed to a vote on whether to call a question. That requires a two-thirds vote, because we're cutting off other people's chances to speak. So therefore, we're going to do an electronic vote on the call to the question. A yes vote means we stop talking about this and proceed to the regular vote. A no vote means we continue to discuss the issue, okay? This is not yes or no on whether to do these things. It's yes or no on whether to stop talking about it. I'll ask you to vote on that, the motion to the question. If you want to stop talking about it, vote yes. If you'd like to continue talking about it, vote no. Electronic, now. I'll call a vote to a close, and we'll get the results. 263 yes, 30 no. The percentage is 89.7%. So that means we proceed directly to the vote. The motion is to, for the whole package. What?
What?
We had a, we had a vote to proceed to the question, and now we're going to vote on the question, because they, it won to stop talking. Okay, now we're going to have the vote on the question. This covers the whole group of items 1 through 10 on page six in your booklet, and it is the motion... It is the motion that is printed just above the box there. We'll ask you to vote on that motion now. Electronic vote. I'll call the voting to the, to an end, and we'll get the results. This is a two-thirds vote required, because there's stabilization money involved. And our percentage? 75.62. That's a 75% vote in favor, which is in excess of two-thirds. We have 214 yes, 69 no. What's the matter? 214 yes, 69 no. That's a 75.62% in favor, so the motion passes. Now remember about this page with all the capital funding for the school, because we'll want to look at that later when we vote on that. Article 10 is the fiscal 20... You know, with a crowd this big, even a few people talking quietly adds a lot of confusion for other people's ability to listen. So please be thoughtful of that. Article 10 is the budget for fiscal 2025, and where we will have a series of motions on the budget. The Finance Committee will take the first shot at the budget in each case. And if you look in your booklet, way in the back, beginning on page 24, you find the budget. Now, the motions for this have not been printed and given out to everybody, but they... The motions have not been handed out to everybody for the budget, so listen carefully to the budget. When the motions are made, they will take sections of the budget, and if you listen to the numbers in the motion, it covers the line items that go down the left-hand side of each page, beginning on page 24. Okay? So listen carefully, and we'll have the, we'll start with the first motion from the Finance Committee. Mary Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to raise and appropriate $1,671,608 to fund items 1 through 49, as recommended by the Finance Committee, for fiscal year 2025. As the moderator said, you can find those line numbers, 1 through 49, on page 24 of the warrant. Thank you.
I need the motion. The motion is to raise and appropriate $1,671,608 to fund items 1 through 49, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2025. And this covers all the items on page 24 and the first few on 2025, on page 25. And you'll note the figure, in the fiscal year 25 ATM, annual town meeting, you'll see that $1,671,608. You'll see that total. So this is a vote to spend all of that money in the fiscal year that starts July 1st. Does anybody in the Finance Committee want to speak further? This is the Finance Committee's recommendation for the, for the budget for the next fiscal year. Anyone else want to speak to this matter? If not, I'll ask you to vote. You can vote electronically. Starting now. I'll call it end to the vote, and we'll get the results. 238 yes, 22 no. The motion passes. Public safety motion?
Mr. Moderator? I move to raise and appropriate $2,506,163 to fund items 50 through 66. Transfer from the Public Safety Special Stabilization Fund, to item 51, police wages, full-time and part-time, and to appropriate, from ambulance receipts reserved, for appropriation, $125,000, to item 55, fire and EMS wages, full-time and part-time, for the sum total, $2,777,427, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2025.
The motion is, involves $2,506,163 that's raised and appropriate. That means it's tax money. And then to transfer from the Special Stabilization Fund, $146,264 to police wages in full-time and part-time. And then $125,000 from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation to fire and EMS wages, full-time and part-time, for a sum total of $2,777,427, as recommended by the Finance Committee. And that's that same figure that you'll find at the total public safety in the column for fiscal 25. And this is a, this will require a two-thirds vote. Does anyone want to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote electronically, please. Starting now. I'll close the voting. We'll get the results. 243 yes, 31 no. And the percentage? 88? It's 88.6%, which is well in excess of two-thirds, which is well in excess of two-thirds, so this motion passes. Public Works. Scott Schultz of the Finance Committee.
I move to raise and appropriate $851,665 to fund items 67 through 77, and to appropriate the sum of $9,450 from general cemetery receipts and the sum of $1,600 from sale lots to item 77 cemetery expenses, for the sum total, $862,715, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2025.
Motion is made and seconded. Raise and appropriate $851,665, and to appropriate from general cemetery receipts, $9,450, and $1,600 from the sale of lots in the cemetery to cemetery expenses. The sum total for the whole section is $862,715, as you find at the bottom of the column under total public works. Anything to be said on this motion? Scott?
Yes, just a couple of things to note. There is, right now, the transfer station expenses, previously had been done by offset receipts. You can see this on page 20... You can see this on page 23 for the revenue, and that's something that's outdated. It's the last item we still had that way, so it's going to be moving to a revolving account. So, the...most of the expense line item was reduced significantly because of that. The additional monies were left there to cover the full expenses. But this will get...the revolving account will allow them to spend money as it comes in, instead of having...using the antiquated offset receipts method. Also, you will be voting later on Article 28 regarding the playing fields, and we are anticipating additional maintenance expenses. So, one of the things that's also added in here are at least one additional seasonal worker, just specifically to target the extra mowing from the extra...having the irrigation and also the fertilization of the fields, assuming that passes.
Hi, Brenna Ewing, Cemetery Commission. I would just like to call your attention to the fact that we were asked to keep our budgets level this year, and Public Works is $115,773 under last year's budget. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? If not, I'll ask you to vote. Please use your electronic voting. Calling into the voting. 254 yes, 15 no. The motion passes in the affirmative. Human Services. Scott?
I move to raise and appropriate $169,308 to fund Items 78 through 89, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2025.
This is the total that you find on the top of page 26. $169,308. And it's all tax money. Anyone want to speak to this? Scott?
The main item to note here is line 83, which was the Social Workers Services Full Time Wages. About two years ago, she was moved to a full-time position instead of part-time, and that previously was funded, those two previous years, the additional half the year by ARPA funding, the American Rescue Plan Act. So, this budget moves the entire Social Workers wages into the budget.
Anyone else want to speak to this? If not, I'll ask you to vote electronically, please. I'll call a halt to the voting now and we'll get the results. 218 yes, 29 no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Next, we have Culture and Recreation. Mary Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to raise and appropriate $215,612 to fund Items 90 through 96, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2025. Just a comment on the expense line under Recreation. That's covering cost of keeping the fields in good condition at Berlin Memorial.
This is the total of $215,612, which you can find at the end of the...as the total under Culture and Recreation. Anyone else want to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. I'll close the voting. 256 yes, 13 no. Motion passes in the affirmative. Dent and Interest.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate $285,475 to fund Items 97 and 98, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2025.
That was Clifton Laporte of the Finance Committee, who I haven't managed to mention his name up to this point because he's there, ready to go too quick for me to get it in. Anybody want to speak to this one? Hearing no one. I'll close the voting. We'll get the results. 245 yes, 16 no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Mr. Laporte?
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate $999 to fund Item 99, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2025.
This is the funding for the town share of the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. And it is...we take it up separately simply because we take up basically all of these items on this section of the budget separately. And this is a small one. Anyone want to speak to that motion about Central Mass Regional Planning? Not hearing. I'll ask you to vote by voice. Vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Assabett Regional Housing Consortium.
Mr. Moderator?
This has nothing to do with the school.
Thank you for that clarification. I move to appropriate from the Affordable Housing Account, $8,500 to fund Item 100, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2025.
The motion is for $8,500 for affordable...from the Affordable Housing Account to the Assabett Regional Housing Consortium. Anything that was to be said on this? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote by voice. Vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Assabett Valley Regional Assessment.
I move to raise and appropriate $694,928 to fund Items 101 through 103, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2025, as follows. Item 101, account number 8355321, Assabett Assessment, $621,688. Item 102, account number 8355901, Assabett Debt Repayment, $64,162. And Item 103, account number 8355903, Assabett Capital Stabilization, $9,078.
These have to do with the school. It's those three items, Items 101, 102, and 103, as listed in the book, in...on your booklet, and it's in the amounts that was stated there for a total of $694,728...$694,928. Anything further to be said on this? Anyone else? Hearing no one, I will ask you to vote electronically. It's a lot of money. I'll close the voting. 230 yes, 230 yes, 19 no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Berlin Memorial Assessment. Mr. Schultz?
I move to raise and appropriate $4,022,545 to fund Item 104, as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2025.
Motion is made and seconded to raise and appropriate $4,022,545 for Item 104. And you'll find that number in the fiscal 25 line on Berlin Memorial Assessment. That motion is made and seconded. Want to speak to it?
Yes. As you'll of course notice, that this particular line item does not fully fund the budget that was approved by the School Committee for Berlin Memorial Assessment. Reasoning for this goes back to last year. So, last year during the budget process, we allocated additional monies specifically to BMS and Tohonto. A BMS increase was 9.1 percent. Tohonto, 8.9 percent. Typically, we target a levy increase, your overall tax levy, of 2.5 percent. We increased that to 4 percent, which provided an extra $200,000, which was provided to the schools. During this process, and very late in the process, in March, we received information from the schools, a very unexpected situation regarding BMS, and a very unique situation of having four students coming into the district that would require out-of-district special education tuition potentially. So, it was talking about a exposure of around $700,000 just for BMS in that situation. This obviously was...would result a huge increase to the overall tax levy if it was funded just for the...out of the levy. So, an agreement was...came up with the schools. So, the schools added additional funds from their revenues they received. So, in that case, it's school choice, also circuit breaker money, which they get paid back unfortunately in the following year for reimbursement for special education. They added a total of $350,000 additional funding. We provided additional $383,000, specifically $382,715. And to make sure that this wouldn't come off the tax levy, we had extra free cash last year, and we used free cash to fund it. Now, the reason for this is in discussions with the school administration, we know that these things can be very fluid and also cause significant spikes that come and go. So, the hope was, at the time, we did not know, I mean, it was just the hope, was that by using these...this free cash and also the schools using their additional funds, that we would be able to smooth out the spike in the property tax increase. Well, what we learned too is that the guess on this actually ended up being correct. The...we know that the students left the district in December, removing that exposure to the district. What was not known at the time was that the school's BMS ended up using this additional funding to fund three additional special...sped teachers or sped employees that basically producing ongoing operating costs moving forward. So, instead of this $383,000 being a one-time thing that we hoped would go away, which it did, it's now turned into an ongoing operating expense. As much as they talk about this budget being for BMS, saying there's not adding anything new this coming fiscal year for what is being recommended by the School Committee, when you voted at this town meeting a year ago, you did not vote with the description and the expectation that this was going to add additional resources. It was really meant to cover the out-of-district special education tuition that we had the exposure to. So, it seems only appropriate too that you understand that this additional increase by going into the operating budget will significantly increase the tax levy. So, I know there will be proposals by members for these schools to go for the entire school budget on the Tohonto Assessment and the BMS Assessment. We need to look at what kind of impact that will have on your taxes. Last year, again... Last year, again, we targeted 2.5 percent increase in the levy. We moved it up to 4 percent by taking an additional $200,000 to BMS and Tohoto. By using $383,000, we prevented that levy increase being 7 percent. This year, the recommended budget, as it sits before you from the Finance Committee, targets the traditional levy increase of 2.5 percent. So if you're looking at what type of increase this would have on your property taxes, not going to talk about what the average value is and just throw out numbers like this, you can just do the math from your own property tax bill from last year. So if you had the recommended budget from the Finance Committee of 2.5 percent, that would be just under two-thirds of the cost of what your tax increase was last year. So if you had a tax increase of $600, it would be just under $400. If it goes with the recommended by the School Committee for BMS and Tohoto Assessments, the overall tax increase would triple from the Finance Committee's recommended to 7.5 percent levy, even greater than what we tried to avoid last year of 7 percent, which would basically turn almost double the tax increase you had last year with this one going forward. So if you had, again, $600 tax increase, you'd be looking about $1,150 tax increase. So these are things to keep in mind as to why we are here with the budget as it is, and keep that in mind about how it will impact you.
Wow.
Brenna?
Brenna Ewing, Pleasant Street in Berlin. All the departments in the town were suggested by the Selectmen and the Finance Committee to keep our budgets level, and Tohoto and Berlin Memorial have not honored that. I don't know where they could have found savings, but I can't afford this year's taxes, never mind doubling next year. So if you like me, vote against it, because if you don't, I have to leave.
Tell them who you are first, and if I'm the School Committee.
Hi, I'm Lisa Mayer from Ball Hill Road, and I'm on the School Committee. And, Mr. Moderator, I would like to move to amend the motion of the Finance Committee by increasing the amount of the appropriation to meet the assessment from the Berlin-Boilston Regional School District for the fiscal year 2025 school district budget, such that the amended motion will be as follows: that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,508,106, which sum includes an appropriation for the Berlin-Boilston Regional School District budget in the amount listed under column Fiscal Year '25 Request for account
So that is about the same line, line 104, and what you're doing is moving to change the number from $4,022,545 to $4,508,106, which is the requested number in the second column, Fiscal Year '25 Request column. Okay. Speak to it.
Oh, okay. Well, the amendment to the motion is to ensure compliance with state regulations concerning regional school districts, specifically 603 CMR 41, which provides that the budget as adopted by the Regional School Committee and the members' assessment as certified by the Treasurer of the Regional School District shall be placed before each local appropriating authority for its consideration. And the town meeting is the local appropriating authority of the Town of Berlin, and the amendment, if approved, will place the actual assessment as received by the town from the Berlin-Boilston Regional School District before this body for consideration. So we're just giving you guys a chance to vote on what the School Committee recommended for our kids.
Okay. So we have a motion made and seconded to amend line item 104 up to $4,508,106. And we'll get to it. When you've spoken to it, do you want to speak to this?
I'm not speaking to it, just a motion.
Okay, next.
This is a motion to amend the previous motion. I move to raise and appropriate $4,022,545 to fund Item 104 as recommended by the Finance Committee to pay the town's assessed share of the Berlin Memorial School operating assessment for fiscal year '25, and to raise and appropriate the additional $485,561 required to fully fund the assessment and thereby approve the district's operating assessment for the Berlin Memorial School for the year, provided that this additional appropriation be contingent on the approval of Proposition 2.5 levy limit override under General Laws,
Now, we had a motion made under this article. We had a motion to amend it, and now we have a motion to amend the amendment. Hopefully, it won't be too confusing. I'll try to keep it straight for you. Now, this motion is to raise and appropriate the $4,022,545 that they suggested before, and make that as a clear appropriation. And then to the additional $485,561 to fully fund the assessment would be subject to an approval on the ballot of a Proposition 2.5 levy limit override. Okay? That's the motion that's before us, made and seconded. Now, that's the one we're going to vote on first. But first, we'll have debate on it. In other words, this is debate on having it go to an override vote for the additional money. Yes?
Point of parliamentary inquiry.
Start at the microphone, not all the way.
Kyle Burns, Pollard Road. It's a point of parliamentary inquiry. When the, if I read the warrant correctly, and the maximum allowed budget for the levy limit, fully funding our schools does not increase. We do not exceed our maximum levy limit. Therefore, we cannot go to ballot. We are within the allowable maximum budget.
Call on Town Council in regard to that statement. Introduce yourself, dear.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Heather White, Town Council. I have spoken with DOR on this issue, and it is permissible to make this appropriation contingent on a Proposition 2.5 override notwithstanding the existing excess levy capacity.
Speak more slowly, please. Some of us have old ears.
I have spoken with the Department of Revenue on this question. It is permissible to make the appropriation contingent on the passage of a Proposition 2.5 override notwithstanding the existing excess levy capacity. It means that the motion to amend the amendment is allowed under law.
But, point of inquiry again, because this body is convened to make appropriation of our tax dollars.
You need to get into the microphone. You're not on the microphone.
Sorry. This body is convened to appropriate tax dollars for our budget, and if we are not going to exceed the tax levy limit, it doesn't seem appropriate to move to ballot, and moving to ballot pushes the timeline of this budget. As such, not funding the schools to the appropriate level would in fact cost the schools and our students the same amount if we don't vote for it now. It's a double hit to the kids, and I'm pretty sure it's not appropriate.
Kristen Roben, Town Administrator.
I'll try to make this simple. So basically, you have excess levy capacity, which means you can tax people more than 2.5 percent, but it costs you more. The idea of putting this to a ballot vote on an override is so the greatest number of voters in town can have a look and make a decision. We understand that there are many people that can't necessarily come out to town meeting. We appreciate all of you being here. The idea is to take it to a ballot vote through an election process. It takes 35 days to put something onto a ballot and have a special election, so this is not necessarily going to cause a delay in the budget process.
How much did you say that this was going to raise, could raise the taxes?
Basically, combining both the BMS Assessment and the Tohoto Assessment, of course, we'll be voting on the Tohoto Assessment two items from now, but if both of those are approved as requested by the School Committee, it will increase the levy by 7.5 percent. So for comparison purposes, the levy increased 4 percent last year, which was higher than normal. So any particular dollar above tax increase you had last year, you can do this individually. Whatever your dollar amount increase was last year, you can expect that dollar about increase to nearly double if both the Tohoto and the BMS assessments are passed as recommended by the School Committee.
Thank you. Yes?
Mike Tomlin, Derby Road. I am also a member of the School Committee.
You two need to speak slowly.
I'll try to slow it down. I'm a little faster in my younger days here. Just to address what Scott said earlier about last year's budget numbers, not completely accurate. We've gone through that over the last several weeks. Not exactly how it happened. That money is saving the town money by developing these programs. I'm not going to try to change your mind on what to vote tonight, whether you vote for this, don't vote for this. If the budget doesn't pass, if it goes to a ballot, 35 days puts us awfully close to that date where we have to tell teachers, you're not coming back next year. So keep that in mind while you vote, please. Also, if you are not in favor of this School Committee budget, if you think this is too much of a hit, that's fine. The School Committee has a meeting tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. at Tohoto. Please come, let us know what level budget you would accept. Let us know which teachers you don't need back next year, which programs you don't need back next year. Do you need music? Do you need art? Do you need math and literacy help? The School Committee will need to put another budget before you, the town meeting. There's no need to go to a ballot. This is the appropriating authority, as she mentioned. These are the Massachusetts rules on how to approve a regional school budget. So it wasn't on time. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
One speaker at a time. Everybody can line up and come speak. We're perfectly happy to hear it.
Whether you want to approve this budget or not, I'm not going to...
You don't talk over me, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. My apologies. I didn't hear you speak.
One at a time. Mr. Tomlin has the floor at the moment.
Thank you. Whether you agree with it or not, please come to the meeting tomorrow. Let us know what budget you would approve if this does not pass tonight. I believe there's at least three more line items that we'll need to go through this process with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buzz Harris, Village Lane. Bear with me, I'm tired. I barely know where to start. I'm going to say that I'm in favor if we're going to appropriate a budget for BMS that's this much of an increase of it going to a vote before all the voters of Berlin. I also want to say, as the former Chair of the Finance Committee and someone who served on the Finance Committee for six years, I have never in my life seen a school committee come before us and ask for such increases consistently over the past two years that have been proposed by this one. I also wish to say that in my experience, they act in bad faith. There was an agreement among the Town Administrator, the Head of the Finance Committee, and the Head of the School Committee, that the money that they received last year on an emergency basis was one-time funding. They agreed to that. They agreed that it would not go into the ongoing budget, and now that is exactly what they have done. They have rolled it into the ongoing budget and abrogated that agreement. They have also refused to participate in the budget development process in the Town of Berlin for the past two years. Now, they will come and tell you, oh, we came to a first meeting with them. Let me tell you quickly, there's a first meeting in November, December, where everybody come, all the departments come to the Finance Committee, and they have, they touch base about what the expectations are. But the actual meetings to do budget development are in late December, early January, through early March. The School Committee has simply refused to attend those meetings, which is unheard of and outrageous. And I would like to hear Town Council provide information about the statute they cited in the first gentlewoman's discussion of this, in which they said they have the legal right of themselves, not as members of the town, but as the School Committee, to bring a proposal without going through the Finance Committee, et cetera, to the floor of town meeting. That said, they have said, oh, well, we came to the initial meeting, and, oh, well, we passed a budget and delivered a copy of it to the Finance Committee.
State your view, not theirs, please.
Pardon me?
State your view, not theirs.
Well, I will say what occurred. They provided a copy of a fait accompli budget to the Finance Committee in March, without any discussion of it. So I urge you to support this going to the ballot, if this is the budget we're going to approve, and I urge you to support the Finance Committee's proposed budget if not.
We've got other people waiting. You want it again? Are you still speaking for the Committee at this point?
I'll speak for myself. Yes.
All right.
So again, yes, Mike Tomlin, Derby Road. That is not true. He predicted it. I was the Chair of the Committee last year when we had this supposed agreement. That was not the agreement. Just wasn't. In regard to how a budget is put together for a regional district, in 2019, both of these towns voted to become a full regional district. This is different from how you operated before then. It changed the rules on how budgets are done that some of you may not be familiar with. It is not our rules. It is the State of Massachusetts rules. Those are the rules. In the amendment, Lisa mentioned the number, 60341 CMR? Yeah. All right. How does a budget get this high in a school district? How does anything get this high in a school district? How does your grocery bill get this high in its school district? When we print all this money, send it overseas to other countries, inflation goes up. Inflation is the relevance.
Get in line to talk if you have a different view.
Inflation is the relevance. Costs go up. That's how we got here. And on the point about the Committee not communicating with the Finance Committee Select Board, in fact, the first invitation to talk about the budget was sent in an email, you can all request a copy of it if you like, dated September 18th, to all of them here, sitting up front, to come and talk about the budget. Some of them did. We talked about it again in October. We talked about it in November, December, January. The current Chair of the School Committee has a list of dates that it was discussed with the towns. So the idea that the School Committee does not talk to the town about the budget and the ongoing changes is simply not accurate, and if you're going to vote, you should at least have those facts.
Heidi Petard, Derby Road. I've been making various notes the past couple days, so please excuse me if they're a little...
Close it over the mic, please.
...a little all over the place, but I think my point will be made. I understand we want the best for all our children and keep them in a nice school with nice classes, but I just don't know where you expect some of the people in the community to come up with this money. There is no more to be had. I went over my personal household budget for the past year. Our increases are groceries 60 percent, electric 6 percent, heating oil 10 percent, spectrum 6 percent, homeowners insurance 20 percent, auto insurance 12 percent. insurance 20%, auto insurance 12%. I don't even need to tell you guys what it costs to fuel your car these days. The increase in health insurance deductibles and copays, I mean, I just don't know where the money is going to come from, and when this creates a financial hardship within the household, what is that going to do psychologically to the family, to the children? When these children start to feel that stress of the financial hardship that their parents are experiencing and probably arguing over? You know, and again, I mean, the reality is that many of us will face moving out of town, and that's very sad because a lot of us have been here for a very long time. Our children have either completely gone through this school system or are still in it. And again, I just, I just don't know where you think we're coming up with the money. And I know when I was younger and in school, there's always been hard times that have come up, and sacrifices do need to be made, and I don't think the sacrifice should be sacrificing the financial well-being of a family. There were times when I was in school, classes needed to be consolidated, bus schedules needed to be consolidated, schools were consolidated. I remember the town I lived in expanding the mileage for kids that had to walk versus taking the bus, because the busing budget needed to be cut. I think just this blindly having this open checkbook, spend now, think about and figure it, figure it out later, is just asking for financial disaster, not only for the town, but for individual families.[697.23][697.23](applause)
Remember that the motion right now is one that would make the increased amount over the Finance Committee's recommended number a ballot question to be voted on as an override. Yes?
Kyle Burns, Pollard Road. Yes, it's hardships for all the families to pay, but we, right now, we're talking about, the committee's arguing about where the funds are coming from and who deserves what. We've yet to talk about what the impact is on our children's education, so I'd like to, if that's all right, invite John Campbell and Lisa Sequera to-
Excuse me. You talk for yourself, and we'll take them up if they want to speak later.
Well, fine. I've sat through those meetings, and hopefully they can stand up here and echo, we're going to lose teachers, we're going to lose specials. I'd ask them, they're not towns members, so we need to invite them up, I believe. Is that a point of clarification?
Are you on the school committee?
I'm not. I'm a parent-
Okay, thank you.
... and a taxpayer.
Are you finished with what you want to say?
No, I'd like to be able to have the people who can speak to what our, well, the impact will be on our schools, speak publicly. That's what I'm asking, sir.
Okay. So that's a question about the impact on the schools?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Are we going to hear that from a school committee member, the superintendent or someone? Whatever.
I'll let you guys go.
Carol Costello, the superintendent of schools.
I brought the administrative team here to speak with me tonight. I know many of you. I've, I've known you for years, and as parents of children in our school district, I've watched your children grow up and go through Tohoto. I'm here tonight for our children, and that's what I want to address. That, that's it for me. Many of you, when I came in in 2008, we had a small school. We thought we were going to close Berlin Memorial at one point. We had about 179 children, and they were, and it was getting smaller and smaller. I want to be able to give you an idea of the number of children we have in both Berlin Memorial and Tohoto, so you can understand all of the things that folks have talked about. Yeah, that, there's, there's variations on that, on these conversations, but the key is we, our costs are increasing as well, too, and a lot of that is special education we're paying for, but it's also cost in salaries, health insurance, all of the things that typically businesses have to pay for. Unfortunately, we are responsible for that, too, and we are kind of, I hate to say, the biggest business in town, but it is a lot of money, and I recognize that, and I, and I honor your, your challenges with that. Let me just give you an idea of how many people are, how many students and faculty are in Berlin Memorial. We have 231 students now. We have one administrator, 13 classroom staff, nine special educators. We have specialists that include art, music, phys ed, and technology media, which we split with Boylston. There are six of those. We have 22 support staff, including paraprofessionals, many of whom work one-on-one with our special, our students with disabilities, as well as some administrative assistants. We have two cafeteria staff, and we have one custodian. At Tohoto, the number of students in the school are 554 students. The administrators we have are three, the classroom teaching staff 36, the special educators seven, the specialists nine, the support staff 24, cafeteria staff six, and the number of custodians three. I just bring these numbers to your attention because I, I want you to see the picture of who we're paying for, who, that we need to meet those costs, and that is why our expenses are going up, and I realize it is a lot of money, but this is what we'll need to do to, to keep us moving and keep us moving forward. So that's really it for me. I'm, I'm here to tell you I care very deeply about our children, and I really do want to fight for them. I have been since you've known me. I've been here 16, 16-plus years, and I've watched us become such an impressive district, such an impressive schools. I'm so proud of our children. I'm so proud of our teachers. I want us to keep going with this, but I'm going to need all of you behind me, and I know it's a reach. I really do. I'm going to turn this over first to John Campbell, who is the principal in Berlin Memorial, and then Lisa Sequera, who many of you know, who was a town resident in Berlin, is now, after years as a teacher and department chair in Tohoto, is now, I'm proud to say, the principal of that school. So I'm going to let you speak, because they know best about those children and what those, and those teachers, and what their needs are. So, John?
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, sir. Now, this isn't going to work, is it?
Pull, pull the thing up there.
Pull the thing up.
I'll give you the right height for you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. It's, it's an honor to, to address this body after 12 years. I want, I will be brief, because we are all very tired and very hot, and I only want to say a couple of things. I don't know about the 380, whatever it is, $1,000. They don't include me in discussions like that.
Speaking of the mic, John.
I'm sorry. They don't include me in discussions like that. What I do know is what happened with that money, and I just want to clarify that for you. We had four children we were very concerned about. Because we had adopted an internal program, we were able to save a great deal of money on two of those four, and in addition, bring new children in that would have ordinarily gone out to out-of-district placement. So the program ends up actually saving us money. It is a ton of money that we ask for every year. An earlier speaker was talking about her utilities have gone up, and her food bill has gone up. Yeah, us, too. Our bills are going up, too. What I want to say to you is this, unlike Tohoto, and Ms. Sequera will talk about the things that they would lose there, $400,000 means, I don't have that to cut. I can eliminate all the specials. It doesn't even come close to what the proposed amount is, and I know that that's hard, but that's the reality at Berlin Memorial School. We've become an excellent school. We're highly rated. People move here for this school, and I'm super proud of it, and until tonight, I was always super proud of how everyone supported Berlin Memorial School, and I'm hoping that continues. So thanks for hearing me out.[1148.41][1148.41](applause)
Your comments are regarding to Tohoto, right? Your comments are going to be in regard to Tohoto. Why don't we wait till we get to Tohoto's budget to do that? Thank you. Yeah?
I live on Carter Street. I'll try and make this point very brief. In town government, town politics, no one, you know, runs for office, you know, political. We're not running, you know, school committee is Democrat, Republican. It's supposed to be, you know, nonpartisan, and, you know, this is the Berlin Town Meeting, and to an extent, that, that involves, you know, Boylston and such, but I question when a school committee member feels it's necessary to talk about money being printed and our foreign policy. I think that gets far afield of the point, and I just don't think that's appropriate. I think that is politicizing the office, and I just want to say that.
Noel Rosenberg, 21 Village Lane. I want to speak to the current motion that is on the floor, which is to amend the motion to move the additional monies to state, to prop 2.5 override. Given the, the way in which this came to the town, and that it, that it's an attempt to bypass the Finance Committee, which is, is how every other department brings their, their budget to the floor, I think it is only appropriate that the entire town get a chance to vote on that additional money.[1274.83][1274.83](applause)
Yes?
All right. Shane Ross from 15 Linden Street. So, I wasn't really involved last year. I was actually asked to be on the Finance Committee. I resigned. I was asked by people from the town, people from town departments, just because I have a lot of business experience. One reason I resigned is because the two committees didn't work together. I have two children, and it's a failure of both committees not working together, and now our kids, my kids, I know my taxes are going to go up 7.5%, and guess what? Our town, we're not working together. I mean, I don't know what else to tell you. I got, like, we're here, I got my finance thing, it's got emails, oh, he, he sends this email. Who cares? Talk to the person. We were at the LinkedIn meeting, and people were getting all mad, well, you're, you sent an email from a lawyer. It wasn't. They were just citing something, and people got upset. I understand that, but you're not working together, and you guys did not. That's why I resigned. Period. You, you can't, there's a higher purpose. I mean, you let a business $250,000? Come on. I could have bought that two years ago, but I would have walked into a shit show. Come on. Work together. This town has to grow. There has to be some commercial development. Can't all be on the taxpayers.[1360.33][1360.33](applause)
Your, your position right now is, give your view on this question, and let somebody else-
It's a hard choice. I know it is. But we have to make a decision now for, for the kids, and what did the teachers do? The teachers didn't do anything. I mean, I think the committee should resign. Honestly. Think about it. Give themselves pink slips. They didn't even work for the kids. That's why I resigned. I will never serve on a committee, ever.
Anybody to speak?
Uh, this is really not going to work.
Give your name and address, please.
Brian Tedesco, Bassett Road. This is not how I thought my night was going to go. I'm new here. I am an active-duty Marine. I've served for 18 years. That's not important.[1415.21][1415.21](laughter) I apologize if I get a little bit emotional about this. I have served through the longest period of sustained conflict in American history. That background means that I've seen, well, I, I have a particular affinity for any program, any institution that takes care of children. In 18 years, I've moved 10 times. This move here was the one I was the most excited about. I have been in Missouri, Louisiana, North Carolina, Virginia, California a few times, Iraq a few times, whatever. When, when people said that the school system here was pretty good, okay, we'll check it out, and when we looked, we very specifically, I work up at AIR in Fort Devens with the 25th Marine Regiment. You maybe see some of our Marines at, like, Toys for Tots events around Christmas. It's not that far of a haul, but there were other places we could have lived. We very specifically chose to live here, very specifically because of this school and its rating. I have, I have a seven-year-old, and I have a four-year-old, who are playing in the library right now. I am, I am, I've historically not been a good student, which is probably why I have the job that I have now. Never excited about school growing up. My kids love school. My, my daughter loves spelling. My son asks questions that I, at 40, am not smart enough to answer. I have been to cities in places where they do not invest in the education of their people, and I have been to cities that do. You can see the difference. If you want a good community, if you want good people, a good education system is a fantastic way to start building that. We're not talking about, and I don't mean any disrespect to my fellow, to firefighters, I love, I fully back the, the red line, but we're, we're not talking about things. We're talking about people, humans, our humans, our very little humans, who are probably raising all sorts of havoc in the library right now, because it's way past our bedtime. If something is important, we invest in it. I am asking you, please, to help invest, not just in my kids, but in yours as well. Thank you.[1586.63][1586.63](applause)
Make it brief if you can, because we've got to keep moving. We've got a lot of things to do.[1593.83][1593.83](applause)
Thank you. Thank you. Again, Mike Tomlin, Derby Road.
Move the mics a little.
Yeah.
To you.
There you go.
There you go.
Just to clarify, a couple of folks have mentioned about how this budget was brought to the floor, not through the Finance Committee, through the usual process. The school department is a two-town regional school district. It is not just another town department. Not to bring any of the other departments, or to speak little of any of them, I'm looking at police and fire in the back of the room. Police and fire are a department of the town. The school district is a regional school district. It is not the same thing. It is not the same process. Massachusetts regulations dictate how the school committee budget, or the school budget for a two-town regional school district comes to the town's appropriating authority. That is the way it was done this year. That is the way it was done last year. That's the way it's been done since you voted to be a regional school district. Before 2019, you were not a full regional school district. You were different. It's different now. This is what was voted for. So, the comments about how this budget avoided the Finance Committee, first of all, are not factually correct. Second of all, that is not the process. So, please understand that when you vote. The comments about that are just not accurate.[1678.83][1678.83](pause)
Let's remember that the question before us now is whether we put Proposition 2.5 override question on a ballot to cover the increase. Yes?
Barbara Huntley, 23 Flit-
Get closer to the mic, please, dear.
Barbara Huntley, 23 Pleasant Street. I just want to say that I've been a teacher for 40 years. I've taught in Minnesota, California, France, Italy with the Air Force, Long, New Hampshire, Long Island, New York, Florida, and California, and Vermont in Massachusetts, and I've learned a lot along the way, but when I look at this, I see some things that bother me. I haven't, I have taught all these years. I've never had air conditioning for $400,000, and I've never had walkie-talkies for $10,000 and $12,000. I think we need to do a little budgeting, and maybe not try to, I know we want to give our children everything, but maybe just an education is enough.[1772.01][1772.01](applause)
Wayne Texera, 201 Gates Pond Road. You know, regarding this motion, I, I think if it, if it's going to be a higher amount, then yeah, I do think it should be the voters that have the ability to vote on it, and it shouldn't necessarily just be this meeting.
Speak up.
But, but I think it's, it's disingenuous, I think, to lecture this, this body about what the- the regional school committee is, and that it runs under different rules. I think we all know exactly what we voted for when we approved the region, and yep, we know things are going to be different, and things are going to work different, but we also saw the school committee function fine after that transition. I'm not sure what's going on with this particular school committee, despite the constant, you know, saying that's not how it was done. I do know that they never showed up to the Finance Committee's meetings that they were supposed to be at. It is, you know, to be frustrated with one committee over another, I don't think that's fair either. I think it's an issue of, you have to work together, you know, and I think if you're gonna, you know, not negotiate with another committee, then I can understand why the Finance Committee would play hardball and say, then you're gonna get a flat-funded budget. I mean, you know, this is about fiscal responsibility. It's not just about children. I'm, I was a child that lived here 58 years, so I know from once I speak, I went to Berlin Memorial School, not in this building. I went to Tohonto, not in the current building. So this town does fund education. It does support education. It doesn't not support your children if you have them in the school because there's an issue of, you know, how much it takes to educate them. It's the, it's the people that are elected's job to negotiate, to come up and make some hard decisions, because we cannot just fund whatever. And, and it's easier to fund it when you know that there's honest negotiation and open discussion about it, and when funds are appropriated, which I remember voting last year, it was supposed to be one-time, and to find out that was sucked into the budget, that does not make me happy. So I think that those are things you have to remember. You know, it's, maybe, maybe we do get to the point where, yeah, we can work on that and, and move forward. But I don't think that if you just continue to hand carte blanche to people that don't play by the rules, make up their own rules, and say, I don't have to play with you, because now I have the power that I'm my own entity, I think that's really disingenuous. And I know the town of Berlin that I've grown up in, and the people that were on the Select Board before me and stuff, wouldn't appreciate that. So that's my viewpoint.
First, I'm report.
Cliff Laporte, Gates Pond Road. I rise to support the amendment that suggests that we fund it at the Finance Committee level, and put to a vote the higher number, because... I bring to this position, six years on the school committee. I was chair for three years. We made the regional district happen. I, I don't want to be lectured by anyone in this room how a regional district operates. We wrote it, we established it, we cooperated with both towns, and we came up with budgets. So please, don't lecture me. Now I'm on the Finance Committee, and everyone comes to the table and describes their hopes and dreams for the work that they do for the town, and what that might cost. And it was really a wonderful experience, it's my first year on the Finance Committee, to hear the things that people want, and why they want them, and what needs are being met. And then we have to sit there and say, well, can you do it for less? Can you accomplish some of those things, but not all of them? Can you keep within the budget that we're asking you to keep in for the benefit of the community? And people did that, with one exception. I think if people are going to be asked to take a 7% increase in taxes, that everyone in town should have the opportunity to go to the ballot and say aye or nay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Luke Rosell, together with my wife Meg, and our sons Abe, six, Artie, three, and Calvin, three months, who's in the back there being pretty quiet. We live at 183 South Street here in Berlin. I also have my legal practice here in Berlin. I'm a solo practitioner litigator. And so I wanted to make two quick procedural points and one more substantive point. A procedurally, I completely respect the opinion of the Town Council and of the Department of Revenue, that it is permissible for the town meeting to put this matter onto the ballot. But respectfully, I would mention that I'm not aware of any controlling authority allowing for that. Certainly, the intent of the law is that when the levy will exceed the maximum allowable amount, that's when it could be put onto the ballot. I think everybody, one thing that there is agreement on is, this doesn't, the school committee's budget proposal does not exceed the maximum allowable amount. I'll also mention that the Department of Revenue publishes guidance saying that in this situation, it's actually the Town Council and not the town meeting that would be the body who would vote to put it onto the ballot. But those are two procedural points. I think the more important substantive point, and I certainly don't mean to come off as though I'm lecturing about how regional school districts works, but I've, I've looked at it, my understanding of the way this would work is, if we don't approve the school committee's request, then it will go back to the school committee, and then it will come back to a town meeting. If we still don't approve the request at that point, it'll go back to the school committee, and then there'll be a joint town meeting between us and Boilston. And if we don't accomplish all of that within a certain deadline, the state will take over the regional school committee, and we will get 1/12 of last year's budget month to month. We'll get, it's almost like a spend-thrift thing, where we get 1/12 of what we had last year month to month. And so it would seem on the face of it that if you're concerned with town autonomy, you might want to vote in favor of what the Finance Committee has proposed. But really, that's putting town autonomy at great risk, because we're setting ourselves up to have to pull off a really complicated procedural maneuver in a situation where there is some legal gray area about whether or not this is even a legally permissible procedure for doing that. We're putting ourselves on a very short timeframe, and in the end, a very likely risk that we're taking on is that the state is going to end up taking over our regional school district, and is going to be able to dictate terms to us in a way that would lower the autonomy that we still enjoy now. So I rise in opposition to the motion to put this to ballot, and in support of the motion to give the school committee its requested budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Reddington, Pleasant Street. First of all, those of you that are in the school committee and the FinCom, we know that you spend a lot of your time for no money. And for those of you that are really unhappy with either of those committees, I'm sure there are positions available. But I don't think it's the place for us to have kind of a big pissing contest about either of these committees and/or the money. I'm pretty disappointed that we came to town meeting and that this hasn't been worked out in advance. I was in the town many, many years ago, and we used to come to fisticuffs at these meetings, because we didn't have a capital planning group, and we didn't have a FinCom that approved stuff in advance, so we can all come here and rubber stamp it, and even though it does take two nights. But I also want to make the point that the children aren't just about the school committee. The children are about the rec committee. They're about the police department. They're about the fire department. And they're about our ability to pay our taxes on a regular basis. So I don't think that we can make it seem like if we are being a little fiscally conservative, that we have anything negative to say about the children. And I think we should support taking this to a vote.
Yes, Town Council can have a brief statement in regard to some procedural matters.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Heather White-
Get closer to the mic, dear.
Heather White, Town Council. I just wanted to address a few of the legal issues that have been raised. First, I completely agree with the school committee, that the school committee does have the statutory right to present a budget to town meeting, so we have no dispute about that. And there may be other requirements of the regional school district agreement or other provisions of law that may or may not have been followed, but they do have the right to present their budget to town meeting. There, it is also allowable under state law to make the passage of the budget, or a portion of it, contingent on a Proposition Two and a Half override. So as town meeting, you have the right to say that a part of this funding is subject to the voters approving that. Whether or not that is something you as a body want to do is another question, but it is allowed under law. And then finally, if town meeting does not approve the full amount that was requested by the school committee, it is not necessarily a given that it would have to come to a district-wide meeting. The school committee also has the option of reconsidering its budget and approving something that's in accordance with what is appropriated tonight, the lower amount, and then no further action by town meeting would be required.
Jason Capricata, Pleasant Street. That's a good point. I think, what I'm just wondering, I think a lot of people are wondering, are, what's in the budget? What's, what's that $400,000, $500,000 for? We don't know. And I think a lot of us are, just don't want to write any more blank checks, and just say, oh, we hope for the best. Just want to know what's in there. That's it. So, that's it.
I think we already had the superintendent and the principal speak to that.
Is there an outlier?
There's, the budget is actually on the district website. There was a public hearing on March 19th, where the school committee voted, and-
We need to come and do this to the microphone, please.
Is it online? Detailled out?
Yes. I'm sorry, Shane.
Hi, Megan Grill. I'm the Chair of the School Committee. On March 19th, the school committee did convene for a public hearing. It was open to the public. Anyone could come and speak. At that time, the committee voted on the budget. The budget is online. It was presented in detail at that meeting. So anyone looking for the details of the budget, it is on the district website. Okay.
That's my question.
Lou Duquette Holmes. I'm Village Lane.
Closer to the mic, please.
Lou Duquette Holmes, Village Lane. So I'm, I'm really concerned about this whole thing.
Just raise the mic, so it's right in front of your mouth, dear. Thank you.
Sorry. So I'm, I'm really concerned about the increase in the taxes. We're a very low-income family. I have four children in the district, two at Tohonto, two at Asabet. And, and I also work in, in a, in a field that is dealing with a lot of outplacements. And I'm curious about, because of a lot of the issues that have happened post-COVID, and with a lot of the kids, I, I think that it makes sense to have some additional, like, supports for the special ed. But I'm not sure, I haven't looked at the budget, unfortunately, so I, I'm not entirely sure. So I'm, but I tend to think that the, the budget that is, the original budget that we were going to vote on, not the amended one, I think makes more sense. And then, you know, if we want additional things, we can talk about that. And again, tomorrow, there's a, there's a meeting for the school, school committee, so. But I guess my, my concern is that the, because of a lot of the issues that a lot of school kids are having, you know, what the breakdown is for additional special ed staff versus paying for potential outplacements in the future.
Is that a question somebody could respond to?
What was the question?
I guess it's over.
So the question is, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, what is the, I know we're, we're rolling the, the outplacement from last year into permanent special ed, special educators, correct?
Berlin Memorial adopted a program called the Bridges Program this year, and this allows children that may have needed to go out of district to be able to stay at Berlin Memorial with their peers. It also saves the district money, because we don't have to pay for the out-of-district tuition.
Yeah, okay.
So that was something that was done with the savings of that $383,000 that was discussed before. And it was also voted on and discussed at a school committee meeting. That was recorded, and there's minutes online. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Mayer, Ball Hill Road, and I'm on this school committee. And I just want to say, you have no idea the conversations that went on behind the scenes about the things that we wanted, or we felt we needed, that we said, we can't ask for that, considering, you know, the, the budget last year and the budget this year. You know, Heidi talked about all of these massive increases in all of her household expenses. She was like saying 20%, 30%. Well, if we get everything, you know, that's in our budget, that's like 7%, you know, as you said. So that's even less than a lot of our other bills are going up. We, I mean, we are really sensitive to these increases. I mean, we live here, we don't want to pay increases either, but we just don't think that the kids should be the victims of that. And I just want to say, just in case it seems like we're, you know, overly luxurious or anything, our per pupil cost is much less than the average in the state. Like, some, some towns, like Cambridge, I think it's like 35 or 40 per pupil, and ours is like 18. And then, also, Heidi mentioned about moving out of district, because we just, she can't afford to live here in Berlin. But most of the other school districts are having the same problem, because, you know, we all have these increases, you know, just with inflation. So that's just the reality.
Paul McKelk.
Paul McKelk, Carter Street. I've been listening to numbers of teachers-
Get closer to the mic, Paul.
I've been listening to statistics about staffing and all this, and I feel like we're in a tennis match, volleying dollars back and forth. But what I haven't heard, particularly from the school committee, is some way of quantifying, how bad is our system going to go down if we don't spend this money? We've heard people who've moved into this town because they like the school systems. Well, for one year, is our system gonna, you know, is the sky falling? I mean, really? Can, can somebody try and quantify for those of us who don't have young children in the school, what the downside is if you don't get your 7%?
Hi, I'm Julie Lee. I'm the Vice Chair of the School Committee. I think if, Mr. Moderator, I could invite John Campbell back up to speak to that impact, and what that would really mean, where we stand if these cuts happen at Berlin Memorial School. We'll do Tohonto after.
Excuse me. You want to be moderator?
No.
All right. Don't call on people. Ask your questions, so we can move on.
I'm asking permission, if Mr. Campbell can come speak, to answer the cuts that are going to happen.
Certainly.
Thank you.
And up we go again. Julie. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Someone advised me that you might not know what specials are. So in this little school, we have two of every grade, two teachers at every grade. We have five specials, one every day, art, music, physical education, health, and library. The specials allow teachers a little bit of planning and meeting time, so that they can get their work done during their workday. In addition, we have, in addition to special education paraprofessionals, who are required, there's no getting around those, we have two other paraprofessionals, one who's a recess aide, and the other who works in kindergarten between the two kindergartens. That's my staff. So if the budget is as it was proposed, and I know we're kind of off-topic, because the motion on the floor is something completely different, but to answer the question, if the budget were to pass at that lower number that the Finance Committee has recommended, what would happen is that we would have to eliminate the people who provide art, music, the band, instrumental teacher, the library teacher, the health teacher, keeping only physical education, because it's required. So all of those things, and this is not like, oh, all these terrible things are going to happen. That's just the reality. All of those things would have to be eliminated, and with the number that was proposed initially, I would still have to find other ways to save. And I don't- And I don't, I truly, truly do not know what those would be, but those are the cuts that I can list. Art, music, instrumental license, lessons, health, and library. Those things would all be instantly eliminated. The other problem that we have is that people that we would cut back to save some money are going to go get jobs somewhere else. They love it here, they love our school, but they have to work full-time. Those are the challenges of the budget, the number that's presented by FinCon. Thanks for letting me share that.
Yeah, Lucy Ayers, West Street. I grew up in this town, went to a parochial school, so I didn't go to Berlin Memorial, but I did go to Tejant. First freshman class at Tejant. So you can kind of figure out how old I am. So here I am, representing myself first as a senior citizen and hopefully see other senior citizens who live in this town. So I was a stay-at-home mom until my kids were old enough. You know, I know, I can see people bouncing their heads up and down while, you know, until my kids were old enough to go to school. So now I'm retired. You know what my raise was this year? It was $600 for the year from Social Security. And I'm expected to live on that. Yeah, I do have a little bit of pension that I also tap into, but my guess is that most of you make more in one week than I do in one month. And my taxes have just been going up every single year between 600, 800. One year it was $1,000 and it went up. And I think it's great. I know that these kids need to have an education, and I'm all for it, but how am I going to pay for this? Do you want me to set up like a food sale at the end of my driveway for every, you know, for every month so that I can get enough money to pay for the extra taxes that you're asking me? And I would really hope that the school committee would go back and look at their budget and cut out what they can cut out so some of us senior citizens can live and actually have a life that's worth living.
Okay. Somebody over here. Are we getting done? Our issue right now before us is whether we go to an override vote or not on the additional money. That's the only issue that's here now that we're going to vote on, is whether or not we go for an override vote. I really think we've talked enough about it in order for us to deal with that question. And we can, we still can deal with some of the other aspects of the whole thing after that. But right now is the question, do we vote this as an override, to put an override question on the ballot for the additional $400-plus thousand? Can we move to the vote?
Yeah. I just wanted to call the question. Correct. Thank you.
Good. Okay. In that case, the motion before us right now is to raise and appropriate the $4,22,545 straight up and to appropriate the additional $485,561 as a Proposition 2 and 1/2 override. Okay? If you vote yes, it means we will have an override vote on that, or at least we will request the select board call such an election. And if we vote no, then this goes away and we're back to voting on the school committee's amendment to raise the total amount. I will ask you to vote now. Yes, if you want to go to the override vote, no, if you do not. 138, yes. 145, no. That disposes of the idea of doing it as an override. Okay, now we're back to the school committee's original amendment, which was to raise and appropriate the full amount of $4,508,106, which was the school committee's requested budget. Is there further debate on that issue?
Yes.
We have a couple of people that would like to speak. Let's keep it short at this point.
Hi, I'm Gail Terman. I live at 81 Village Court. So I pulled up the budget as suggested by the school committee on my phone from the budget meeting that y'all had. And I'm, it's not maybe, all I found was the PowerPoint. I don't know if there's something else I'm supposed to be looking at, but the PowerPoint basically only has six line items, and the biggest increase, well, okay, so I understand what instruction is. I don't think I understand what other services is and why it's going up by $103,145. Everything else sort of seems reasonable. I also was wondering if we have sort of a fixed population in the town, why instruction is going up as much as it is, which is $219,020? And I was wondering how many teachers that actually funds and what they're teaching.
Can someone from the school committee react to that, or the administration?
Julie Lee from the school committee. To answer your question, the, if anyone's looking at the PowerPoint, it's page five. This is the Berlin Memorial School FY '25 budget comparison. And the $219,000, that is a, it's a combination of things. It's the teacher contracts, I don't know where you went, 3% increase, there's paraprofessionals of a 4% increase, and some of that money is also helping fund the Bridges Program to keep our, to keep kids in districts so we're not absorbing the out-of-district tuition cost. And I don't know what you said for the other one. Other. Okay, wait. Yep, other. The reason why that's so high is because our special ed transportation cost increased, and this is a gasp for everybody in the room. It's gone from $171 a run to transport children up to $400 a run. That's mandated by the state. That's not something we have any negotiable control over, so we have to pay it. And it's not as if the state helps fund that either. So that speaks to those two line items, instruction and other services. You're welcome.
Mary McKelk, Carter Street. Are we, can I ask about the capital assessment? This, or we're not on that yet? The capital assessment line item?
You can't.
Or we're just, we're not there yet?
Kate Bliss, Randall Road, call to question.
Motion to question. Is there a second?
Call the que, call the question.
Motion for the call, we have a motion and a call, a second for the calling the question. That means we would, we will proceed to a vote on whether to stop debate at this time. And the next vote that we take electronically is going to be a motion to stop debate. If you want to stop talking about it, vote yes. If you want to keep talking about it, vote no. I will ask you to vote now. 244, yes. 28, no. We now proceed to the vote on the question at hand. This is the vote on the amendment. This is the vote for the school committee's number of $4,508,106. If you vote yes now, you're voting for that larger amount. If you vote no, we go back to the other motion at the lower amount that the finance committee gave. At this time, I'll ask you to vote again, and this time is for, is yes for the larger number that the school committee represented, no, is, would be to go back to the other one. 130, yes. Motion fails. We go back to the original question. The motion is to raise and appropriate $4,22,545 for the Berlin Memorial School operating We already know what people felt on all the stuff we've talked about before. At this point, we're back to the finance committee's 2 and 1/2% increase as a suggested amount. I hope we don't have to debate it. Can we proceed to that vote? All right. Let's keep it. The number we're now voting on is $4,22,545.
Hey, I'll keep this quick because I know folks are tired and hot, and we've been talking about this for a while.
Get closer to the mic. Turn the mic toward you.
So listen, I understand the financial hardships that everyone's against and facing, and I certainly understand the consequence of the school committee's recommended budget. I want to share something like this. Anyone make one of these in elementary school? Remember? Anyone play one of these in elementary school? If, if you approve the finance committee's budget, the children at Berlin Memorial School will no longer do this. That's tragic in my view.
At this point, that's already passed. That question's already passed. That's already lost.
You can vote no.
It's already lost.
You cannot approve the...
If we don't vote this, you won't have your budget at all. At this point, we have to vote on the finance committee's recommended amount as a budget for the school department. Yeah. This is in order that we will have a school budget for July 1st, no matter what. I'll ask you to vote again electronically. A yes vote approves this amount, a no vote says no budget at all. Please vote now. 97, no. The motion carries in the affirmative. If only there weren't so many other lines to do. Line item number 105. What? There are two more items under the Berlin Memorial Assessment. This is the Berlin Memorial Capital Assessment is the next one. And we have, again, two figures. A hundred and forty-three thousand... We have two figures. A hundred and forty-three thousand, one thirty-two from Finance Committee, and five hundred forty-three thousand, one hundred thirty-two from the school committee. We have a motion under item 104.
I move to transfer for free cash $143,132 to fund item 105 as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2025.
Motion is made, seconded, for the Finance Committee's figure of $143,132 for item 105.
Hi, Mr. Mauretter.
Yes.
Am I close enough? Hi. This is Julie Nowitzki.
We've got to have to turn the microphone down toward you a little bit so it can be heard.
Okay. I have never actually done this before. I've been on FinCom for a few years. I forget how long, four maybe. But this year, I also ended up sitting on capital planning. Because of the way things work with finance, I do not vote on the capital planning, but I do attend the meetings and act as a liaison. So I have attended all the capital planning meetings since the fall. As you saw earlier, we have different buckets, if you will, for where funds come from. One of them is free cash. The schools made a request that was higher than we had allotted for free cash this year. And normally, the capital plan committee makes all its decisions by the end of January, but the school district didn't actually meet with us until March 28th of this year. And they brought several requests. One of them was the HVAC. As, I can say, as, you know, the committee was not against the HVAC system. Their frustration was they felt very uncomfortable because they were just given a number without any backing. Usually, there's a bid with something itemized. So in the future, if they come back with the itemized budget, it's quite possible that they'd be happy to fund it. That was the only reason that, that $400 wasn't approved by the capital planning. Thank you.
You may want to look back now at page seven, that list of capital items for the school, Berlin Memorial School, and, which is the up, no, the Tohonto, the Tohonto list is the upper list, the lower list is Berlin Memorial, numbers one, two, three, and four. And you've just had some comment about the $400,000 that was not approved by capital planning or finance. Okay. Go ahead.
Steve Clark, I'm on capital planning. Be honest with you, the school committees did not come. I was embarrassed for them. They had no numbers, no quotes, nothing. They walked in and asked for $115,500 for computers, pads, that type of thing, no numbers. Nothing at all. They just came with that one figure. I reluctantly okayed it because it was, he told me, boxed me what it would cost. HVAC system came in for $400,000, same thing, not one quote, nothing. And this was four days before the warrant was printed. So it's not that we didn't want to give them the money. The problem was, they were very ill-prepared, and the principal was there, and he'll agree with me. And, huh? Yeah, you were sitting there. So the facilities manager was there, the tech manager was there, none of them had numbers to back up what they wanted. Nothing. So a month later, we get a quote for $297,000 for an HVAC system, quite a big difference from $400,000. Another thing you should know is, if we approve this, and we get a 40% rebate back from National Grid, the town does not get the money. The school committee gets the money. Okay? So at $300,000, at 40% rebate, is $120,000 the school committee would get to spend as they want to, because they're paying the bill even though you're authorizing the money for the fiscal year. That's a fact.
Okay, at this point, we have the Finance Committee and Capital Planning Committee's suggestion. What? I'm just making sure I got the numbers right.
You're trying to move the meeting along. I appreciate that. So what I want to know is, what's wrong with the system? What investigation for alternative solutions have you done?
Get closer to the mic.
I worked on the Energy Committee 10 years ago, and we revamped all of the valves and electronics and everything in the system. So I'm curious why such a large price and what we're getting for that.
John.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to clarify, we could have been better prepared, I think is what I would say in public. The HVAC number is actually, they're called mini-splits. There are two parts to this. One, well, a ton of work was done on the heating plant. We remember, you've all seen the silo we have, biomass, heating now, and an oil tank that backs it up. The unit vents in the classrooms, however, are the original unit vents, which means that when the motors fail, we can't get new ones. We have to get, like, things that kind of fit. And we've had a problem, as that's gone on, finding ones. It takes days to do it. When it takes days in the summertime, it's not a big deal. When it takes days in February, it's kind of a problem. There are two advantages to this mini-split thing. One, it's going to cut down our heating costs in the winter, because they will supplement the heat that the building already provides. And then in the summer, it will provide cooling. Not cold like in my house, but cooling. And I had a conversation with somebody the other day. We were talking about this. When I was in elementary school, and dinosaurs roamed the earth, we, when it came springtime, it was so hot in the classrooms, we would just put our heads down, but we would watch the World Series. That was our learning that day. The kids in school now, within the first week, they're working. You know, so end of August, beginning of September, 85, 90, 95 degrees in those classrooms, and they work straight through to the end now. It's such a different world, and that's why we pursued it. It's going to save us some money. The rebates are great, and I bet, but I won't speak for school committee, but I bet that we could make agreements that we would write down this time, so there'd be no confusion, that that rebate money could come back to the town. But that's just me. Thanks for letting me clarify.
Do others wish to speak to the $143,132?
I guess the other part to my question was, did you get any quotes on fixing the system as opposed to replacing everything with a completely different technology? You've been coming to the town for extra tax monies for many years. We've given you a lot of money, and now you're asking for even more. That's usually not what you do when you've gone to the well a lot of times.
Walter Bickford.
What?
Make it short.
Go to. Make it short, he says. Walter Bickford, 212 South City. I'm listening to this, and I got to tell you, I went through the Berlin school system, and look at me. I went to South School when we had a three-holer for the men and a three-hol for the women. And you wanted air conditioning, you opened the window. And so, and so did Barry Ega. He didn't moderate, Barry to me. And we all went to school through the system, and, you know, all this unbelievable technology, and everybody's got to artificially control the environment and live in this system. It just seems like it's a little too much for me. But I understand what's going on here, and it's probably, and I understand that I'm a little outdated, but I, I just wanted to express the fact that I just think that where we're going with all of this technology, and everybody, kids have got to be air-conditioning, and we sat there, again, with the three-holders, and I remember the water system. It was a big jug, and we had to go in with a paper cup and get the water system. It had to be brought in by the janitor, and we all lived through it. And we all got educated. We went to college, and we had careers, and I think we're pretty well successful. Never mind wind it up. I'll speak when I want to speak. And anyway, I just, I had to express that. This is just, I, I just can't see this pampering of everybody with this air conditioning and everything else. So thank you very much.
We need to get the unnecessary chatter aside with one speaker at a time, and give them the courtesy so we can get through and get the session completed. Steve?
I have to agree with the principal. I'm not against fixing it, but cost-effectively trying to fix a 25-year-old system economically isn't worth it. I'm, I've been a facilities maintenance guy for 45 years, and it's time to bite the bullet and do it new. It'll be more efficient with the high-tech things, the computerized. It's the way to go, but get your bids in from the vendors and do it the right way.
Can we be ready to vote on this one? Okay. The motion is to transfer from free cash $143,132 to fund item 105 as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2025. Vote on your electronic items, yes or no. I'll call the voting to a close. We'll get the results. One hundred sixty-one, yes. Thirty-seven, no. The motion passes. The next item. Tohonto Assessment.
I move to raise and appropriate $3,286,541 to fund item 106 as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2025.
The motion is to raise and appropriate $3,286,541 to fund item 106 as recommended by the Finance Committee. Made and seconded, and this is the Finance Committee's two and a half percent from last year? This is the two and a half percent increase from last year? Okay. That's on the floor.
So for those of you who don't know me, I am Lisa Siqueira, Principal at Tohonto. I do understand that there's been disagreements between Town Finance Committee and the school committee, and I'm not here to talk about that. Whatever happened, let us hear. And here is where we are. I'm not speaking to you as a representative of the school committee or the town for which I am a former resident and can no longer afford to live, but as the principal of a school which could potentially change irrevocably tonight. Today marks the beginning of Teacher Appreciation Week, and I had to open my faculty meeting today with, what would Tohonto look like if required to make $730,000 worth of cuts? I proceeded to say, I am going to describe to you a school that none of us wants to imagine. Now, I've learned a lot over the past year about regional budgets. So the question that I'm sure you're all asking is, why $730,000 when the discrepancy between what the FinCom just presented and the school committee presented is actually only $255,751? So the school committee has presented a budget of $3,542,292. Again, a difference of $255,751. And I am in charge of the budget for Tohonto. And from what I understand, and I would invite anybody, if I'm wrong, please tell me that I am wrong, but from what I understand, that that is Berlin's share of... I am wrong, but from what I understand, that that is Burlin's share of the Tohoto expenses, which equals 35% of the whole Tohoto budget. Therefore, when I look at my budget for Tohoto, in order for me to come up with savings between the two, the discrepancy for the two numbers, to save that much money from the Burlins Assessment, I actually have to come up with a total number of $730,000 so that that savings is reflected. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So when, so I'm talking as the principal, working with the kids every day, and I get an email today, what does $730,000 look like? And remember, I can't live in Burlin anymore. I can't afford to live in Burlin anymore, but I am greatly passionate about the school district that my children went through. So these cuts are dictated by what is required by the state for graduation and what is not required by grad, for graduation. All sports would be cut from Tohoto for all seasons at all grade levels. This would be effective starting August. Soccer, field hockey, cross-country, and football would be first, the first seasons to disappear. All extracurricular activities, including but not limited to National Honor Society, Student Council, Mind Matters, Model UN, yearbook, drama club, would be eliminated from Tohoto. Middle school students would no longer have access to the world language curriculum. In addition, programming lost in the middle school would, they would also lose support provided by our middle school assistant principal, as that position would undoubtedly be cut. In terms of other positions threatened, there is the curriculum coordinator who accesses grants to fund programs outside the budget, coordinates professional development, and state mandated training to maintain our ability to support our students and meet state requirements. Our new internship and job shadow programs would be eliminated before they began. Finally, and this is the largest cut, the entire music program and the entire art program would be cut from Tohoto. Four teachers would lose their jobs, and students would no longer have art classes or music classes of any kind. Additionally, we will be further restricting special education, who would have limited access to inclusion opportunities through the art and music programs. These opportunities are the cornerstone of a free and equitable education. Let's not forget, the kids are here to learn their core subjects, but for the majority of the students, math and English and history are not what they're passionate about. It's not what makes them get out of bed in the morning wanting to go to school. When they lose their art, their music, their athletic opportunities, many students will lose their passion. There is a huge population of kids who only make it through the day because of the football game they have, or the soccer practice after school, or an art class that they're going to have that day. You may be thinking, my kids have graduated from the system, or I don't have kids in the school system, never have. Most of the time, yes, discussions about school budget will not affect you. It won't make a difference in your life if a new HVAC system is installed in a building that you never really have to go to. However, the cuts that are being proposed for the Tohoto Assessment to meet that $255,175 gap will make, have dramatic impact on Tohoto. One of the reasons why property values are so high in both Burlin and Boylston is because the quality of our school system. We were just identified in U.S. News and School report, U.S. News and World report, that we were one of 2024 best high schools. We are 33 in Massachusetts and number four in Worcester. We are a national blue-ribbon school, an honor that was bestowed upon us at the beginning of this school year. It would be impossible to maintain these standards that brought us to these honors, and this would not only impact the future endeavors of our students and the ability to effectively compete with other students as they apply to colleges and universities, but this would impact home values, as the district would no longer be able to provide the education that would warrant steep housing prices. Students would leave our district, they would school choice out of our district. And this is only, I see a very small portion of the budget, but a $255,000 gap between what the School Committee presented and what the Finance Committee is presenting for Tohoto is not that much money to me when I'm making that budget. It's a $730,000 gap that I have to come up with, and it's heads. Thank you, thank you for listening, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Is the School Committee going to talk at all further? Not smart.
Speaking as someone who sat on the Finance Committee and collaborated with the previous school committee for six years on budgets for BMS, Tohoto, as well as Asebet. Oh, Lord, sorry, I'm tired, I'm losing my train of thought. You should know that for the past quite a few years, both Tohoto and BMS have been rated in Massachusetts in the top quintile, that's the top 25% of elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools in the state. And they did that for many years, I watched it happen, with increases in their budgets of between 2 and 3.5%. And when they needed more money, they told us and they made the case. I heard that litany of horrors, and I have to be frank and say, I don't believe it. But I can tell you that, as I said, our schools have reached a level of quality with the kind of funding that they have had for many years. So what has changed in the past two years? I find that hard to get my head around.
Peggy Stone, Lyman Road, I ask to move the question.
Okay, is there a second? The motion is to move the question on the Tohoto High Middle School Operating Assessment. The figure we now have before us is $3,286,541, which is 2.5% over last year's assessment. If you want to continue to talk about it, vote no. If you want to stop talking about it, vote yes. And we will take an electronic vote to determine whether we stop debate. Yes, to stop debate. No, to keep talking. I'll call a stop to the voting, and we'll get the result. 152 yes, 35 no. We will stop the debate and immediately go to the vote on this motion. We will now open the voting on the motion which is to approve $3,286,541 for the Tohoto Operating Assessment. Vote yes or no on that. I'll call into the vote, and we get the result. 135 yes, 52 no. The motion passes in the affirmative. All right, so after 11 o'clock, we have a vote at this time as to whether to continue business or move the meeting to another date. And so the vote is, those who, oh. Those in favor of continuing this evening, say aye. Those in favor of adjourning to a later date, say no.
No.
That takes care of that. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I, I.
Listen, please, please keep it quiet for another minute.
I move to adjourn until Tuesday, May 7th, at 7:00 p.m. at Burlin Memorial School Gym to continue the warrant articles as printed.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn to tomorrow evening at 7:30?
7:00.
7:00?
7:00.
Oh, God. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abos, no. Thank you very much.